Mrs. Combezy, would you call the robe please?
Present.
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 Thank you very much. Without objection, we have a heavy executive session today, so without objection from trustees, I want to ask that they move forward and we go into executive session immediately. I'm sorry?
Pledge of allegiance.
Oh, pledge of allegiance, great Scott. Please join us. It was in my mind that you all can do it. Please join me. Salute that pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit.
One nation, united in the equalled liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At least I didn't ask you to sing the song Oklahoma today. I liked the national anthem. No one wanted to join in on that. Not even the Olympians, that's amazing. So, if I entertain a motion...
Would you like to do public comment first so we're not keeping any...
No sir, I don't today unless you have a hankering. I think we need to get on with our business here, which public comment is a part of the business. But given the weight of the issues, we need to step forward on a couple of things. So without objection, well, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Start again.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Combezy, call the robe please. Yes?
Yes.
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 We are recessed.
And I would entertain a motion to return from executive session.
Motion?
Thank you. Have a second. This is Compezy call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the minutes and approval of the minutes. Is there any discussion? Any additions? Any changes? Everyone's happy with the minutes? Take a motion?
You got one.
Oh, he made. Great Scott. You guys are fast. This is Compezy call the roll. Thank you. Yes?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. This is Garner. Up for your report, please. Number two on the agenda for those of you who are trying to keep up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Should be the first item in your packet that was distributed this afternoon.
Kind of, but it's not enlarged. There. So this month I'm going to cover most of the things that I cover every month, including an update on our academy. It keeps sliding down on me. Update on our academy, our different programs that we have, some statistical information. I do want to acknowledge that we had a significant incident. We had a person die in custody earlier this month. As with all of those events, it's being looked at by investigators. And we won't know any more information until the ME report comes out. We're currently at 268 employees. That's 169 officers. And compared to this time last year when we only had 119 officers. We've drastically increased the number of staff that are detention certified and are able to work within the population. There's some other stats there on, you know, the gender of our staff, still predominantly female, which is a really interesting and unique thing for us. The different generations that we currently have, most of our staff are currently millennials, followed by Gen Xers. And then, of course, the race breakdown. We are continuing our ongoing employment recruitment. We still have our billboards. We've refreshed all of the graphics on that. And we have the bus stop benches. We have social media campaign. We're still offering an incentive to staff if they meet the goal of hiring on 50 for this next academy. And then I'm just going to keep those up there probably until we get to a point where, you know, we don't have to advertise our incentives, but those are the incentives that we have right now. We have the longevity pay, recruitment bonus, performance bonus, free meals, and then, of course, our annual salary. It starts at $40,000 and it can go up to $45,000 depending on experience. Training updates. Our next academy has been extended to eight weeks. We wanted to include some more reality-based training in anticipation of 50 or more cadets. We recognize that some of the training that takes a week long, like our defensive tactics and CIT, we needed to have two cohorts go through in order to make sure that people get effective training. We also wanted to include some more reality-based training so they have more experience working on the floors and with different scenarios that they may encounter while they're on the job. And we are also going to include discussions with people that have lived experience. So people that are formerly incarcerated, that have We did host the Oklahoma Jail Administrator's meeting about two weeks ago, and this is a meeting that they have monthly. We have discussions about emerging issues, different grants and funding opportunities, different types of training that are available. It's really helpful to see what other jails are doing across the state and vice versa, and then share the information. And for a lot of them, it was the first time they've ever been in Oklahoma County Jail versus just coming in for a transport and picking up somebody. They got to see the pool from top to bottom. A lot of them were really impressed by the operation and they didn't. They didn't know what to expect, but they were pleasantly surprised. Again, with our renovations update, we're almost done with the sixth floor. We are going back and we're redoing some of the showers. The paint that they were using is not working as well as we had hoped. So now they have a different type of, it's almost like a liner, like a truck bed liner material that they're going in and painting to see if that will keep the paint from chipping off during usage. We noticed that right after, you know, the fourth floor has been done for a bit and they've been using it for a while. And so we're starting to see some of that chip off. Other than that, we're still continuing to do the renovations and we will continue to do so until all of the the cells are rehabbed. Some of the programs that we've added, and we do continue to try to add as we can, we have very limited staff that are available to pool for programs, but we're trying to make it work. We have the Veterans Group that meets every other Friday, and that's facilitated by Team. And we have Ocarta in the works for an anger management class. We are also working with an organization called Let's Fix This to initiate voting for the first time. And as far as I know, we're the first jail in Oklahoma that has been proactive in trying to get people that are eligible to vote the opportunity to do so while they're in custody. We still have the stand up initiative with Divergent Hub, Calm Waters, Alcoholics Anonymous, Prison Fellowship Academy. We have Shred the Stigma. Of course, we always have tablets to that have additional classes on there that they can take. This is a slide from last last month. We're still working towards this 13th floor and trying to get it renovated. We do have a new food service provider. It's Benchmark. And we are fully transitioned to them. They are doing our food services and our commissary. Our food services, they have an improved menu. And so far, the feedback that we've gotten from our residents is very positive. Some of them have made comments that it's the first salad that they've had in months since they've been here. They're really enjoying the food options and I appreciate of Benchmark for coming in and making it affordable for us to be able to feed them better. And then the commissary, they've expanded the selection. And what I really like about that is it's also packaged offsite, so we don't have to worry about the storage of it or potential theft of items. It comes prepackaged. And the other side of that is if we're not storing it, then we're not attracting rodents and pests. They they did begin in July, and they are providing our staff with different meal options that they are very pleased with. So we're excited that they continued on that incentive that we offer for our staff. I do want to point out that they jumped in early before the contract started because the last vendor left us high and dry. The food service manager walked out on us. And when we asked what they were going to do about dinner, they were telling us that they we could serve the food that was there. We checked and the dates on the food were expired by over a week. They also did not prepare any of the special diet trays for us. And so, yeah, we we called Benchmark and they came in and they saved the day for us. I I really think there's some value in using a local company like that because they had the ability to do so. They have a warehouse that's local. And they helped us out when we were in a really tight spot.
Excuse me, but the last company was Summit Corporation?
It was Summit. Yes.
And they're out of state?
Yes, they are a nationwide firm.
Good decision.
Yeah.
So far.
So far, very happy with them so far. They also were generous enough to provide ice cream sandwiches to our residents on one Friday when it was like National Ice Cream Sandwich Day. And they did that for our staff as well. I anticipate that they're going to be a really good partner moving forward, and we're just really happy with them. The HVAC, that project began the first week of August. That is an ARPA project that the county is overseeing. It's about $4.7 million project. And the reason that it's being done is it is a life safety issue. We have jail standards that we have to meet. You know, there's temperatures that they have to be within range. And if it gets too hot or too cold, then we we definitely have some life safety issues that we need to be concerned about. Right now, they're identifying all the major issues. They're doing walkthroughs of the system. They've identified dampeners and they've ordered some of them. We're expecting this project to take over a year and a half.
Excuse me again. Who's the contractor for the HVAC? Do you know?
I do, but I don't.
Chris?
There we go.
United? Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
We approve the contract. That's the only reason I know.
I knew it. I just couldn't think off the top of my head. The one of the last meetings that we had with the Community Advisory Board, they had mentioned that they would really, our residents would really like mirrors installed, particularly our females. And we priced them out to put a mirror in every cell, and it came out to be somewhere around $10,000. And so this is kind of a compromise. We got gel rated mirrors and put them in the day rooms and then next to the shower area, just as a way to try to, you know, be more gender responsive in the way that we are operating. I do also want to point out that we have a full time pest control applicator. He was hired in May of 2024. He was operating provisionally until he could get fully licensed, and he's been licensed over a month and a half now. And so he's going top to bottom and spraying. We also created a ticket on the resident request of staff, like on the digital ticketing form, so they can point out any issues that they have. And he'll go and be more responsive versus waiting for an officer to notify. We just kind of remove the middle man, if you will, so they can communicate with him directly and let him know what any issues they have.
Excuse me again.
Yes.
Since he's come on board in May, have the bed bug issue claims gone down? It seems like Channel 4 is the resident entity that receives all those complaints. I'm just curious how we're doing.
It does seem like the complaints that we get are fewer, and I I don't hear as many as I I used to. Not to say that we're not going to have them from time to time, but I mean, I think it's even when the Community Advisory Board comes in and they do their focus groups. I think it's very telling that people are complaining of it less. I'm going to cover this in a later agenda item in more detail, but I just wanted to briefly talk about the proposed intake renovation. There's a whole plan that's already kind of been drawn up, and we can talk about that when we get to the the next agenda item. As far as IT goes, we have implemented a mobile booking. They have Microsoft surfaces that they can meet people in the Sallyport or in the pat down room and begin the booking process earlier. This is just trying to make them a little bit more efficient in booking people in and out to try to get law enforcement back on the street a little bit faster. And it's it's only been a few days, so we're still working out a lot of the details, a lot of the kinks. But this is kind of the direction that we're headed so we can try to work a little bit smarter and not harder. So here's some of our statistics. This is for fiscal year 2024. The top charge, 20%, continues to be possession of CDS. And keep in mind, this is for the year. Over the course of that year, we booked in over 17,000 people on a felony and over 12,000 people on a misdemeanor. Our head count for fiscal year 2024, the average daily book in was 58. The average daily population for the year was 1,267. And the average length of stay, now keep in mind, this is going to be long term people, next time with shorter term people, but the average length of stay was 17 days. As far as agencies for the year, total bookings, 21,352. Males, 16,025. Females, 5,325. You can see Oklahoma City continues to be one of our top utilizers with just over 62% of our population being arrested by OCPD, followed by Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office and Edmund PD. And then just an FYI for the number of people that have been sent to the Department of Corrections for that year, it was 1,069. Our current population as of today is 1,559 compared to this time last year, 1,458. Our current JNS, our DOC sentence, is at 163. I think that accounts for a significant portion of the increase in our rate. But we have nine waiting for the transport to Oklahoma Forensic Center. The average wait time right now is 100 days. The longest is 192, and we have one that's waiting their second trip. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions, comments?
Questions, comments?
Director Garner, on page 17 with the book in totals, Oklahoma City being at 62.8%. If you had to take a guess, what percentage of those would you say were state charges compared to municipal charges?
That number, I think, is around 8,000 that have city charges.
So city charges about 8,000?
Don't misquote me. I actually have that actual number somewhere, but not with me. But I would say there's there's a large majority of them that are city charges.
Okay, but we we have the number, correct?
We do have the number.
So if this number started to move up in the weeks, months to come, for some odd reason, we would be able to look at that and kind of juxtapose those two numbers and start talking about why?
Absolutely. If if next month you wanted me to break it down for just Oklahoma City on the number of municipal versus state, I would be able to do that and then show that over time, maybe not for every month, but at least every quarter.
Every quarter. So we'd be able to look back historically and see how many they have been booking in and start to look at moving forward if that number goes up?
Yes, sir.
I just I ask that because I think that our our citizens of of Oklahoma County, they that's something that just eventually they need to really see because for a lot of reasons. But when I look at the demographics of the population, jail population, and I see about 43% African American, and then I see about 39% white, Caucasian. Then a lot of people would want to point the finger and blame us as the Oklahoma County Detention Center because those numbers, there's a disproportionate difference there. But that's not on us. That is on whoever's booking people in, and the great majority is Oklahoma City. And again, I'll say it the fourth time, if that number starts to go up for any reason moving forward, then we have to take a strong look to to ask the question, why is that number increasing all of a sudden?
I agree.
Reverend, would you be acceptable to a friendly suggestion? Your request on those numbers?
The only suggestion is I just have a personal concern based upon some other things that we will talk about moving forward, that all of a sudden, if this number starts to go up, then I would venture to say it is intentional that this number, it has gone up, not the 62.8, but the state charges compared to municipal charges. There's no reason that number should not somewhat remain close to the same. But if it starts to get out of whack, there is a problem.
Agreed.
Any other questions?
Director Buck? Director, thank you for the annual trend line on total population. A couple of seconds ago, you talked a little bit about the number in JNS contributing to our increasing census, if you will, correct?
Correct.
At this point, is your speculation for the August performance period, will we be ahead of 2023 in terms of total number incarcerated?
I think so.
So that would be your projection a quarter of the or a third of the way through the month?
Yes, I would think that our numbers are going to be higher now than they were last year.
So JNS, and if you've been, as I've been following the data, JNS has been increasing. Are there other constituencies within the population? Perhaps as the pastor so eloquently pointed to that we are seeing a year over year change?
It's hard to say without really looking into the data. I don't have an answer for you right now.
I, as a trustee, I would appreciate if we could spend some bandwidth, understanding year to year comparisons and what might be contributing to those. And then I have one additional question on your data points about the number of people in process, staff members. It was, the slide's not numbered, but it was in your training updates. I I would be interested in what you might be able to share. We have 46 currently in process. Of those, there are going to be a certain number that are qualified for hire. They meet minimum thresholds. What percentage of people who are eligible for hire turn down and offer for employment? And what are the attributing factors for why they might decline?
So I can get that information for you next month. Right now, I just have anecdotal information based on me just doing a cursory look at the information available to me. But sometimes it is the length of time that it takes to get somebody through the process and they find a job elsewhere. I would say that's probably one of the biggest contributors to it.
Yeah, if we could have a data pull on that for our September meeting, I'd love to have a glance at that. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I have one addition to the reverend's request on the data that you're going to pull quarterly for Oklahoma City. Let's just not do it for Oklahoma City. Let's do it for every one of our customers. It can't be that difficult because the numbers are down dramatically compared to the intake that we have from Oklahoma City. What's fair for one is fair for all. Let's just put it out there. Any other comments? Thank you, Mrs. Garner.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, we need to approve it.
Motion to accept the director's report?
This is Kamezi. Would you call the row, please? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
We have 46 currently in process. Of those, there are going to be a certain number that are qualified for hire. They meet minimum thresholds. What percentage of people who are eligible for hire turn down and offer for employment? And what are the attributing factors for why they might decline?
So I can get that information for you next month. Right now, I just have anecdotal information based on me just doing a cursory look at the information available to me. But sometimes it is the length of time that it takes to get somebody through the process and they find a job elsewhere. I would say that's probably one of the biggest contributors to it.
Yeah, if we could have a data pool on that for our September meeting, I'd love to have a glance at that. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I have one addition to the reverend's request on the data that you're going to pull quarterly for Oklahoma City. Let's just not do it for Oklahoma City. Let's do it for every one of our customers. It can't be that difficult because the numbers are down dramatically compared to the intake that we have from Oklahoma City. What's fair for one is fair for all. Let's just put it out there. Any other comments? Thank you, Mrs. Garner.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, we need to approve it.
Motion to accept the director's report.
Mrs. Campisi, would you call the row, please? Yes.
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 The next three items are contract approvals, which we'll have to take care of individually. But Mrs. Garner is going to cover those contracts.
Right, so all of the three contracts are the same. The only thing that changes is the municipality by which we are agreeing, entering into the agreement. What it does is it's setting the rate that we will bill them for this next year for the number of people that they're bringing in on their city charges. And that rate was based on the report that we did through MGT, which set our average daily incarceration rate as far out and also the initial booking rate and then the average rate thereafter. So it's at the 211 and some change for that first day. And then every day after is $61 and some change. So those three municipalities have agreed and they've already signed the contracts. And we just need to ratify that.
Absolutely.
Is there a motion? The first one is Nichols Hills contract. Is there a motion to move and?
Motion to approve.
You'll have to wait till the public session.
I would like to make a comment, and I agree, however. We did not allow for the public comment. And I do think, considering it all, I think it's only fair that we do not wait until the end because we changed it up. That's just my personal opinion.
I don't have anything wrong with your personal opinion. So let's just back up a minute and give this gentleman an opportunity to talk. You have three minutes. And I believe your name is Mark Falk?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'll speak to this real quickly and I'll go ahead and speak to the other item as well. So you don't have to bring me back up here. As I researched into Nichols Hills and the other municipalities, one of the things I'm finding there that concerns me is that specifically Nichols Hills, they now will put people in jail for failure to pay a fine on an uncut lawn. If you look at their city page, any fine, municipal fine that is not paid on time, a warrant is issued. It's not optional, it's not at their discretion, a warrant is issued. And I really think overall, we need to stop putting these people in jail. We have five deaths in this jail already this year. We're on track for double digits yet again. And the jail still has its issues. We still hear from people, in answer to your question earlier, we hear from people every week who have had issues with the cleanliness, with the bedbugs, with problems in that jail and from the family members of those people. It's an ongoing problem. I don't want the next death or the next person who is physically harmed or has something happen to them be in there because they failed to pay a parking ticket. That disturbs me. And I think we need to consider overall how we address those situations. I completely agree with Pastor Scobie when he is talking about the problem of over incarcerating people of color. Again, this has to be a collaboration. The jail trust and the county needs to have discussions with these municipalities. If you're going to house their municipal offenders, we need to have discussions as to who goes into that jail and who doesn't. As long as we continue to put people in a jail for low level offenders and really when you're not paying a fine, now it's a debtor's jail. That is a major, major issue and it creates an unsafe environment. So I would suggest that in conjunction with the discussions that you have about this. As far as Turnkey goes, I'm going to ask you guys to read the very detailed expose about Turnkey in the readfrontier.com website. I don't know if you've read that or not. A very in-depth study of the dozens of lawsuits against Turnkey, dozens of them. They have a horrible reputation in Oklahoma and nationally. They have failed many, many jails. And I would also suggest that in that article, and if you'd like, I can find that for you and give you the address, web address to it. But it's readfrontier.com, it should be easy to find. In that article, they link to some of those lawsuits. Read those lawsuits. Turnkey has a horrible record, so bad that they are written up in national publications on a regular basis. And we strongly suggest that you table this with Turnkey and go back and do a little research into their history before you sign a contract for them to take over mental health in Oklahoma County or to continue doing medical in Oklahoma County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Since we've gone to the public section, Ms. Poplin, is she here? Mr. Eddy? Mr. Eddy's not here. And then we have Reverend Forside. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Reverend Dr. Roy Forside. I'm a retired plastic surgeon and an ordained minister in the Catholic Church and a volunteer at the county jail for the past 16 years. My team of three male chaplains and four women have seen approximately 24,000 individuals over that time and provided them with needed bibles, Bible studies, spiritual guides, encouragement, and yes, love. In the past, inmates were able to put in a request on a kiosk in each pod requesting to be seen by a chaplain, either Catholic or Protestant. I would say that 95% of the people that we saw were not Catholic. And our goal was not to make them Catholic, but to lead them into a relationship with Jesus Christ. All this to introduce who I am. I have not been allowed back in the jail since December 20th of last year. On that day, the Catholic ministry team handed out large Christmas cookies. And they were well appreciated to every inmate in the jail along with a bottle of shampoo. And all the staff got a Christmas cookie as well. Those cookies are famous. I see inmates that have been there before and got out and they're back again. Do we get a Christmas cookie this year? Yeah. It seems the staff is available for secular programs and I think spiritual programs are important as well. There are inmates who are there for one or two years waiting for adjudication of their cases. Being locked up for the first time in the Oklahoma County Jail is an extremely difficult experience. If one of your grown children did by some stupid thing and got locked up in the county jail, you would want someone there who would be a source of encouragement and provide them with some spiritual guidance. It's now been eight months since I and my team have been shut out. My purpose is just to make you aware of that. And I consider it a serious deficiency in our collective responsibility to care for those we detain in the jail. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Forside. Appreciate it. Now we'll go back to the Nichols Hills contract. Do we have a motion? One, is there a second? Mrs. Campisi, call the row.
We have a quick discussion, please.
I'm sorry?
Quick discussion on this agenda item, number three. Can we not have a discussion?
Well, that's not what it says right here in our response.
No, I don't want to, if we can't, if we're not supposed to have a discussion, I definitely don't want to have one.
Let's go ahead.
The only, you can?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. The only point that I do want. It's on. It's on. The only point of discussion I would like to have, and I really would like to somewhat bring Sheriff Tommy Johnson into this. We have, as far as ratification of this agreement between us and Nichols Hills, a couple of things as it relates to some simple fine like a lawn not being mowed. Well, there's no way they're going to arrest one of those people. That's just the bottom line, not in that area. Number two, the, once a fine has been, a warrant has been issued, Sheriff Tommy Johnson's of the world, Oklahoma City Police, et cetera, they have no choice but to arrest that person if they have a warrant out for their arrest.
That is legislation that, you know, I really pushed forward for since I've been in office. And that's something that has passed. On misdemeanor warrants, officers, deputies have discretion to make the arrest, whether they should or shouldn't. So I disagree wholeheartedly that you should be fined or be arrested for not mowing your lawn. And I think a lot of other deputies and officers in the community would say the same. I don't have time to be enforcing something like that. So the discretion would simply rest on the officer or the deputy who was out and they would make that determination whether it was appropriate for the incident.
Thank you. And the only reason I bring this up is I know it's taken time to have the discussion, but I'm in full agreement that this needs to be passed and we have no control over these things.
Yes.
None whatsoever.
No, so it's city.
Ratifying an agreement. So I just think that our constituents, the people that we serve, think it's good for them to have a better understanding of why we would pass, if we do pass it, why we would pass it. That was.
The agreement is simply to house prisoners in the jail. We cannot control the city charter and what they do municipal wise. They have the ability to create their own laws and their own municipal ordinances. And that falls under their charter, what they're able to do. Once again, we can't control that. But you certainly can, as we have in the sheriff's office, go through legislation that gives officers and deputies, you know, the ability to have discretionary calls to say, hey, I understand you have a misdemeanor warrant on this, but honestly, that takes up time out of my day that I don't want to have to deal with because I have other pending issues that are certainly more pressing that we need to respond to. And so I think that would be approached that way regardless of the city charter.
Any other comments? Back to the motion, Nichols Hills contract again. And we have a motion from Miles Davidson, a second by Vice Chairman Buck. Mrs. Campisi, call the row, please. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Item four is the Bethany contract. May I have a motion, please, in a second? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Campisi, call the row, please. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Last contract, number five, Nakoma Park contract. Motion, please? Thank you. Second? Thank you. Mrs. Campisi, call the row. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, brings us to item six. Mrs. Garner, here you go again. The proposed renovation intake, which is the first floor.
Correct. I just put together a quick presentation so you would have a little bit better understanding of what we're looking at and what we want to do.
Do you know who's going to pay for it?
Nope, not yet. So that's part of, that's part of having this discussion.
So we don't even have the Christmas tree yet, or it's not Hanukkah yet. You're.
That's right.
Asking for gifts.
I am, I am. I think it's important to get this before you all.
It is absolutely important.
Before moving forward and trying to secure funding for it. This is something that has been discussed for a couple of years. It was started by Criminal Justice Advisory Council and one of their subcommittees. They, I don't know if you all got copies of this or not, but they contracted with some architectural firms and they put together a renovation for the first floor, specifically the intake and releasing area. Because of the way that it's designed now, it's just not efficient, it's not safe. And so this thing has been floating around for a couple of years now. And I'd really like to revisit this because, you know, we're going to be in this facility for several more years. And if we can make changes now that greatly increase the safety of the facility and contribute to the betterment of individuals, then I think that's something that we need to at least explore on a more serious level. So the current intake and discharge starts here in the Sally Port. This is the current entrance for all of our new intakes and arresting officers. There's only space for two arrestees at a time within those doors that you see the double doors on the left. The rest of the individuals that are out there, the arresting officers and their arrestees are forced to stand outside in the Sally Port. And they're exposed to the cold and the heat. There's no method of securing them or separating individuals. And so it poses a safety and a security issue on so many different levels. I'm sure that the arresting officers would be able to tell you the exact same thing. Standing out there with an arrestee when you have a line of people is not one of the safest things to do. This space is also utilized for people that have been in custody. So as you walk through these doors, you'll see what I'm talking about. But this is also used for people of different base classifications and different statuses. People that have been in custody for a while, with people that are just being brought in, people that are getting released. It's all just a bottleneck of people. You don't want that in a jail. So the current intake discharge, the pat down area, this is where they can only have two people. And once you get two individuals in there and you have them getting searched and taking all their property, that's all you can have in there. It gets pretty congested as it is because it's a narrow space and you're talking, you know, our officers, the arrestee, and then any of the external law enforcement, all in that small space. This is currently the medical intake room. This is a very small room and it is supposed to have enough space for three medical personnel, three arrestees, three arresting officers, and any of our detention staff that may be necessary to provide additional security. As you can see, this area is always congested. It doesn't provide enough adequate space for the separation of people to protect their private health information. It presents a lot of safety concerns and of course, it's very inefficient. This is one of the changes that was made when I first got to the jail as their major. Because they were doing the medical intake at the end, after we had already accepted custody and responsibility for that individual, sometimes that medical intake was not getting done at all. They would be housed upstairs or they would just sit in custody without a medical intake screening and then get released to the streets. As you can imagine, that contributed to quite a few adverse events in the jail. And it's just, it's not best practice to do so. You need to have that medical intake right after you search them and make sure that it's safe for medical personnel to interact with them. Given the location of this, I don't really have any other options. And you'll see right there. So that is looking towards the pat down window that we just saw. That orange arrow is pointing towards the medical room. And down that hallway, if you take a left, is also where people visit with their attorneys. Those are people that have been in custody for who knows how long that are interacting and crossing paths with people that have been in custody maybe five minutes. And so we don't have a lot of information about those people that they're co-mingling with. And then as you look behind the camera, that's the releasing area. And there's also a bench there for people that have been in custody that will be interviewed by law enforcement as part of their criminal case. So you have a whole bottleneck of people, a mixed mash of people that should not be co-mingling in any, any jail. They shouldn't be doing this. This kind of gives a little bit more of an overview of the intake area. So the current booking area, all we have options are the holding tanks. And this is also the area where people are brought and lined up to transport to court. And so then you have people that have been in custody again for a while that are getting transported to court, that are interacting through those windows with people that may not have been there more than an hour or so. Uh, at this point, none of them have been strip searched. So we don't know if they have any contraband on them or not. We have the body scanner, but the strip search is kind of the, the backstop to that. Uh, so lots of safety concerns there, lots of inefficiencies. And this room in the center picture, which is kind of hard to see, that is all enclosed. And that's an office space for our staff. And that does not provide adequate line of sight or supervision over what's happening in those hallways that are external to that office area. And you can see a little bit of it there to the left, that wall is part of that office area. Um, and you're looking down another hallway and you can see that there's a holding tank and then there's the exit door for our court transports. And then that little alcove to the left is where they're getting their photos, um, and their prints taken. So the current issue is it's inefficient and it's not best practice. We have safety and security concerns. We have line of sight issues, blind spots, and it requires more staff to be assigned in that area. So there's another inefficiency for us. Um, it does rely solely on holding cells regardless of charges and behavior of the individual being brought in. Uh, medical lacks privacy, law enforcement officers are on site longer, which impacts public safety. And then of course, the bottleneck and co-mingling of different statuses and, and classifications is a huge safety concern for us. Some of the key changes, and this is just kind of a, a, it's not the final plan, it's what was proposed. There have been several versions of this going forward, but, uh, it would restructure the layout for increased efficiency. Uh, it would separate the new and established detainees to prevent the co-mingling. It would create privacy for better protected health information, enhance line of sight and safety for detainees and staff. Modern models, um, are advocating for an open booking model where your behavior dictates whether or not you get placed in a cell at intake. If you don't get placed in a cell, it allows broader access to not only staff, but, uh, potentially if we have any partners in there for diversion or community services, they could simply just call them up. And it wouldn't be a whole thing where we have to find an officer and we have to have them padded down and we have to escort them over there and then sit with them. It could literally just be a one and done, come on up, I can give you services right now. And, um, so uh, the other thing that it would change is it would allow us to do the change out and the strip searches very early on in the process before they ever reach the inside of the secure side of the facility. And I think that would also enhance the, the safety of our, our jail. And that, that's really my presentation on this. I'm just asking for your approval to move forward however necessary so I can, um, hopefully try to secure funding and a, a solid plan moving forward.
Who did this layout?
HOK.
HOK did this.
They did.
Thank you very much. Questions? Comments? Mr. Buck?
Director Garner, the, uh, question I have, um, I believe it was, uh, July two thousand twenty-two. Um, there was a, a rape charge that was filed in September of two thousand twenty-two against a male detainee, uh, accused of raping a female detainee. Uh, would thi- would that have happened if this would have been the way that you wanted?
No.
I have no more questions.
Any other questions? Comments? Mr. Buck?
Thank you for submitting it. I think this is very important work. My, my question, a clarification before the trust puts forward a motion. Are we the ones who would solicit the quote or is that done by the county, since it's actually a county building that we occupy?
I'm not sure. One of my first steps is to visit with, uh, Stacy Trumbo and some of the board of county commissioners, just to kind of figure out a game plan moving forward.
Any other comments? Commissioner?
Yeah, just real quick, it says one point one, one point two was your initial cost. Do you think you could still accomplish it for that?
No, it'll, it's gonna be higher, uh, because the cost of materials has increased over the last two years. I'm not anticipating it rising above two million dollars. Uh, a lot of our staff, our maintenance staff, we have skilled people on staff like welders and electricians. Uh, they can do a lot of the work in the demo themselves and, but some of the more structural stuff is gonna have to be done by a contractor.
And what do you think our cost savings are from manpower hours? Once we're able to streamline something like this?
I, uh, it's hard to even put a number to that, but it's gonna greatly increase our efficiency. And I know that it will help out with, you know, the releasing, getting people released on time and getting law enforcement back on the street.
So that, that spot that you talked about where the lawyers interview there, uh, is that the camera spot that, that we've had installed with ARPA funds or is that, are the, is that different?
The camera spot?
Yeah. So we talked earlier, there's been four thousand interviews between families and lawyers with inmates inside with the cameras that were purchased with ARPA funds. Is that that same spot? Do they have to come all the way down to do that?
I don't think that's, I think that's a separate thing.
Okay.
Um, the attorney visits are in person.
Okay. And then your, the number on the body scanner, since we bought it, does that twenty-three thousand people go past it?
Yep.
And it was how wide? It seems like that's a pretty bad idea.
Yeah. And it's really not in the right spot that it needs to be. It's just working with that layout, we've done our best to make it work. Ideally, they're gonna go through that right after they get pass searched.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion, if that's the desire. So move, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate it. Need a second, please? We have a motion and a second. Just, thank you very much.
Yes.
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 Next item is, um, Mr. Sherman. Finances. How timely, since we're talking about spending money we don't have, again. And we're getting a budget cut, as everybody knows.
We seem to do that a lot. Okay.
Is that right, Commissioner? We're getting a budget cut?
We're not getting a budget cut.
We're not getting a budget cut?
No, we did stay flat. So technically you could.
You're withholding funds.
No, the county is not withholding funds.
I wasn't accusing you of withholding funds.
I understand.
Get us off high center, Mr. Sherman.
Yes, sir. So revenue in expenses, uh, for July, uh, our revenue was three million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. Our expenses were two million, eight hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars, which gave us a net income of three hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, for the month of July, jail operations produced a net profit for the month of the three forty-three, nine eighty. Cash on hand after paying August invoices, uh, and July payroll and benefits is estimated to be at three million dollars.
Any questions?
So on our income, total income for July was, of course, the three million, one fifty-four, four sixteen, which gave us a favorable variance to the budget of three hundred and nineteen thousand, eighty-one dollars. Of course, most of our revenue will continue to come from the general fund of Oklahoma County. Other sources of income for the month were Oklahoma Department of Corrections revenue of nine, ninety thousand, forty-five dollars. For June boarding, that was below the budget, uh, below budget by nineteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Telephone revenue of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine seventy-seven was above the budget by eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Commissary revenue was thirty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and below budget by, uh, nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Uh, there were no municipality contract boarding revenue for the month. Um, of course, the Oklahoma City contract is still pending, uh, and we did get a ARPA reimbursement of four hundred and six thousand, sixty-two dollars. Uh, our expenses, the total expenses for July were two million, eight hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars, were a favorable variance to the budget of two hundred and three thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Save, sage, salaries, wages and benefits totaled one million, four hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the month and was below budget by thirteen thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. Resident online medical care of six hundred and eighteen thou- I'm sorry. Resident onsite medical care of six hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars for turnkey comprehensive medical services. Our resident offsite medical care was seventy-six thousand, four hundred and six dollars and was above, above our budget by six thousand, four hundred and six dollars. Uh, our utility bill for electricity was twenty-two thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and below budget by twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, our professional services for legal fees was eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Professional services, other fees of eighty-seven thousand, eight thirty-six were for painters, janitorial service and professional consulting. Uh, sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-four was for Lexapro Annual Corrections Policy Manual and Training Bulletins. Uh, our telecommunications services were at two, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-two thousand. Uh, twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty-three will be reimbursed from the county for the ARPA networking project. And our telek- telek- telecommunications equipment for ARPA networking project was thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty, twenty-one dollars, which will be reimbursed, uh, by the county. And then there's our, our current income statement. Um, does anybody have any, any of the trust members have any questions about this portion?
Questions? Mr. Buck?
Yes, sir.
So fir- first as a matter of, um, personal preference, um, on our summary, we are not a for-profit entity. So I think finding other terminology to describe our positive operating margins might be in order.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Noted.
A, a second question I asked you that is at the last trust meeting, um, do you have a report on receivables and their dating?
Is, are you talking about mental health services?
I'm talking about receivables to the trust, monies that we have performed services for, for which we have not been reimbursed.
I have all that together. I don't have the, I, I mean, when it comes from, if we're talking about mental health services, there, there are billables over ninety days, correct?
Correct. That is correct. Um, in the second supplement, I would add to that, uh, you are in the process of evaluating claims both related to mental health and DOC for services rendered for out-of-pacility medical and transportation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we will be updating invoices with those charges, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Buck, I hate to beat a dead horse, but I, uh, on the income statement, I still would like to see, uh, the annual budget as a column.
Okay.
You will remember. I know it's getting small on print, but.
Well, I'll get it added.
Get bigger pieces of paper, I suppose. Any other questions? I need a motion to accept Mr. Sherman's report and statements.
Move acceptance of report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. This is Campisi Colerole, please. Yes?
Yes.
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 Mr. Sherman, you're up again. Number nine, uh, discussion, possible action on the Turnkey Health Clinics LLC.
Sir, we're, we're on number eight.
We are on number eight? Great Caesar's ghost. I need to have my eyes checked. Yes, Mr. Sherman, you are up again.
Has the trust members had the opportunity to, uh, review the invoices presented?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions on any of the invoices for the month?
Motion has been moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. This is Campisi Colerole.
Yes.
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 Now, Mr. Sherman, the Turnkey contract.
Yes, sir. Um, the current contract we have is going to be, um, less by about nineteen thousand dollars as opposed to what it was last year. So, um, we, we are saving some money on this contract, uh, not a lot, but, uh, any money we can save does help. And, uh, I know that some of the concerns that have been mentioned, um, I know that, that we have addressed with Turnkey and, and I know that Donna, who runs our medical for Turnkey, um, does a fantastic job and is very responsive anytime we have questions or need something.
Any questions? Comments? I'll entertain a motion to adopt the contract.
Chris, where are we saving the money?
Monthly cost went down.
But we're still receiving the same services.
Or less. Still waiting on a motion. Chair will entertain.
Another question, if I might, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
What is our standard clause in contracts relative to no-fault termination? Or not, or standard termination, I shouldn't have said no-fault, but all, all state and county contracts have a termination clause. What is that?
Most of them are ninety days, uh, ninety days written notice, uh, typically. Uh, I think that you, I'm pretty sure that you guys follow the same. Uh, some of them, we tighten up a little bit and run thirty and sixty. This being a very vital contract, it wouldn't surprise me if it was at thirty, so we could move quickly if need to.
Do I hear a motion for table?
Is the contract, yes.
Well, for lack of a motion to do anything, we move on. This will have to be tabled until the next session that we meet. Nothing we can do about that. Move on to nine, number ten. Benchmark contract. Mr. Sherman?
Yes, sir. Has everybody had a chance to review, review the contract with Benchmark? And I can tell you, I know, uh, CEO Gardner, uh, alluded to it, but we've been very, very satisfied and very happy with the level of service that we're receiving from Benchmark.
Is there a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Thank you very much. Second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. This is Campisi Colerole. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Number eleven, a couple of months ago, um, staff and, uh, our viewers will remember having a conversation during our session about our contracts, Aaron Shelly, I bet, uh, Scobie, you're the one who, uh, started that conversation. We have some facts and figures in, as promised, and, uh, we have two items on here that shows us the ability, that we have the ability within our budget to entertain a sit-down program, I believe, so we can figure out what the impact will be to our budget ongoing. That'll be both for, um, number eleven, which is the telephone, and number twelve, which is the video. So we have to take those separately. I would propose that we start with a thirty, thirty-five percent reduction in commissions. See how it goes for a month, two months, maybe sixty days, see what the impact is, and then take another shot at cutting again. Given, given the fact that we're trying to embark on some large projects and, uh, smaller dollars, we need to really judge the impact to our budget overall.
Mr. Chair, understandably so. I, my only question would be, is our objective eventually to phase it out?
I would say absolutely, if we possibly can.
Not talking two years, maybe sometime within the next nine to twelve months.
Possibly. I may not be here in two years.
Well, me, me, I hope, um, you know.
I'm dodging that Mack truck right now.
All right.
Is there a motion?
What, what does it do to, uh, you know, income and ability, like you said, to be able to pay and do things with that, those dollars?
Well, according to staff, we still have a budget to cover all those items that we, that the, uh, commissions normally pay for. You want to comment on that, Mrs., uh, Gardner? Is there a second?
So, real quick, Mr. Chairman, according to prisonpolicy.org, that will make us the second, um, least expensive phone call in the country, right next to California, at seven cents a minute.
Is there anything wrong with that, Commissioner?
Being next to California?
Reverend?
I, I just think that this is something, we seem to always get a black eye, the Oklahoma County Detention Center, for so, so many different things, and some, some things are totally beyond our control. I, I would hope that this would be something, I'm so grateful that Commissioner Davison shared that, I, I would hope that this would be something that would be shared in a very, uh, public manner, that we have tried to do, I mean, we've tried to do a lot of things right, but this is something that we have done right, and from the very first moment that I brought it up, all of my colleagues were shaking their heads in agreement that something needed to be changed with this. And I appreciate your leadership and then our colleagues, uh, moving forward, but yeah, this is something that needs to be told from the, from the mountaintops.
I understand. I, I really looking at it and not against it, not against the sentiment of it all, just wanting to, seeing financially where the jail is and, and understanding like, hey, you've still got things you gotta pay for and things you gotta accomplish that takes money.
No, no doubt.
And, and so, want to have a, you know, a healthy level of understanding, how can we limit the financial burden to inmates, but also understand that we have a financial obligation we must meet as well. Where does that blend come in?
And I, I fully understand what you're saying, Sheriff Johnson, however, this is just one of those unique situations in life, that there is no way on God's green earth that we're to pass these type of exorbitant costs on to people who are already vulnerable. And the way that I've communicated it is that I, I believe, and please do not think that I'm just talking race and I'm, but I'm sharing it in context where we have forty-three percent African-Americans in the Oklahoma County Detention Center. African-Americans make up about eleven percent of the, uh, Oklahoma County population. So in essence, we're passing on this cost to, in my vernacular, to Ray Ray and Jo Jo's big mama. She already has enough on her, probably halfway taking care of Ray Ray and Jo Jo's kids, so there's no way she needs to have to pay that. And there's no way that Ray Ray or Jo Jo needs to worry about not being able to call home and talk to their children, because those children might be the only thing that keeps them from going over the edge, or their grandmother. So I just think that it's something we need to make every reasonable effort in order for the detainees, every single race of people in that, uh, that detention center to be able to make those calls, because I believe that other than, I'm just coming up with a number, other than probably ten to twelve percent of them, um, ten to twelve percent, I'm sure, cannot get out. There, there's just no way, you know, maybe they don't, uh, the bond is so high, are there, there's no bond. But some, you have a bond that's five, ten thousand dollars, well, you, most people can get out with a five to ten thousand dollar bond, but they can't. So then that would mean, that would translate into they can't afford those phone calls. And we, we just, we have to believe and trust that money comes from somewhere else. And I've been pushed into it. There's a lot of money on the table that Oklahoma City Police Department, the Oklahoma City, Oklahoma City, needs to be paying us, and they're not paying. And I would rather them pay the money they're supposed to pay, rather than passing it on to these detainees who are the most vulnerable in our county as a whole. That's, that's, that's my sentiment on, on the matter.
So you were asking for, so, I, I don't have an issue with dropping it thirty percent down to seventy, because I think once we open it up to more, that there's probably going to be a higher volume, so it's probably going to offset any direct hit that we would take to our budget. And I think that's what you're talking about, trying to discover.
Absolutely.
So.
Suggestion is a, uh, starting at thirty percent.
So that's the ten cents per minute with seventy percent commission to the authority. I'd proudly make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mrs. Kimpisi, call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 I don't remember what our current rate is. Do either of you on, uh, the, uh, video by chance? I'm sorry?
She's looking it up real quick.
Faster, faster, faster.
I thought you were saying faster. It's like, yeah, what did I do?
I'm sorry?
What, what, what about video?
Well, let's do this.
If we were, if we dropped it, uh, one cent on the phone call rate from ten to nine, and she believes we're at nineteen, that it just follows suit with that, I mean, for, that would be the eighteen cent permission with fifteen percent commission going to the authority, and I would make that motion.
With the caveat that, uh, once again, on this issue, we take a look at it in forty-five, sixty days. Are you comfortable with that friendly amendment?
Sure.
Is there a second for that?
There's a second with the caveat. Beg your pardon? Second, adding your caveat.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. Appreciate it. Mrs. Kimpisi, call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Next is Mrs. Hanson. And you're going to give us a report.
Wow. I'm going to tell you about our mental health program.
Thank you very much. Since we are the largest mental, mental health facility in the state, I think.
I believe you to be accurate.
Close to that. I learned that from Mr. Buck last week. It's, it's just her report.
Oh.
It's not on the agenda.
Number three.
So we didn't load this for the public? You know, I'm old and deaf, so could you come and speak up? And Mother Nature had to call a while ago, which it's inopportune with old men. Come on, somebody figured her out.
There it is.
That's it? Thank you.
All right. So I'm just here to talk about our mental health services. We provide onsite, in-house, mental health services. Um, this is headed by Dr. Lewis, who's a psychiatrist with twenty years' experience, um, nine years in corrections or forensics. Um, secondly, we have a psychologist, Dr. Alicia Urban, who's been fifteen years as a psychologist, ten years in corrections. Um, our mental health coordinator, we have Dee Dee, um, with seven years in the correctional arena. We have three additional full-time mental health staff, three full-time psychiatric nurse practitioners, and one full-time community coordinator. So some of the services we provide, we do crisis intervention, we see anybody with significant mental health issues at intake, we do psychiatric stabilization, brief mental health counseling, medication management, referrals to the outside for stabilization and treatment, implants for group therapy in-house. We see about twenty-five to thirty percent of all the inmates at the jail, they do have mental health issues and concerns. Uh, approximately forty-four percent have a diagnosable mental health condition, such as polysubstance abuse, major depressive disorders, schizophrenia, that kind of thing. Um, the mental health counselor contacts for twenty-twenty-three was over twenty-eight thousand contacts. Um, so far this year, from January to now, we have almost twenty-five thousand contacts, so they're seeing twenty-five thousand patients for medication management, talking to them. For the psychiatric nurse practitioner contracts, contacts nine thousand for twenty-twenty-three, that primarily involves mental health medication management, and over nine thousand year-to-date. That's a lot. That's a lot of our family members, mothers, brothers, sisters, cousins, who made a bad choice and ended up at the jail. Doesn't necessarily make them a bad person, but they need some help, and we give an awful lot of it there. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Buck?
Thank you, Donna, for, um, your work on this, and this may be a, I understand the difficulty in responding to this question, and that is a function with how quickly individuals are in and out of a detention center. But experientially, if you, if you could, um, just based upon your, what does their, a, an individual, a detainee who has a history of psychiatric illness, what is their general compliance, if you will, in the community mental health system that there is to support them prior to their detainment?
I don't have an answer for you. I really don't. I don't know what their compliance rate is. Um, if somebody comes in and says they're on medication, we verify and start them right as if they never stopped.
Okay.
Um, if they were seeing a counselor, again, they get seen. Um, we always err on the side of caution when they come in.
Yeah.
Um, because I don't like to play with anybody's life.
Yeah, so, so I asked that question, knowing that that would likely be the answer. It's, it's very hard in a detention center that has a very short duration of stay to understand what health connection looks like externally, and, and I appreciate that. But I asked the question, and Director will continue to ask it of you, is how can we become more data-informed so that we can help inform policymakers across the board that there are many who enter our care, whom perhaps if they had stayed engaged in treatment, or the system was more assertive in helping them, perhaps they would have not seen the inside of a jail cell. Is that fair?
It's fair.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. You had twenty-eight thousand mental health contacts in twenty-twenty-three, and so we're, through July, we have twenty-five thousand. What did we attribute to that? Better access, more, what would be, I mean, we're, we're looking at what, maybe having fifty thousand at this pace?
Yes, um, better access, and, um, for example, if somebody comes in and they refuse to answer any and all questions, I'm going to construe that as you potentially wanted to hurt yourself.
Okay.
I'm going to put you on suicide watch.
Okay.
Okay? Um, and then they get seen every day from there.
Yeah, it, it's not a bad thing. I just want.
No.
The reason, but if we're, better access, you know, we're responding to it, so that's good, so, okay, thank you.
Better access, better service, restarting meds and other therapies, yeah.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion to accept Mrs. Hanson's report. So moved?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kimpisi, call the roll, please. Yes?
Yes.
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 Next item is, uh, number fourteen, which coincides, correlates with, uh, item twenty-two from our executive session, and, uh, would entertain a motion for action needed.
Motion to approve contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Kimpisi, call the roll on the Alstott. Thank you. Yes?
Yes.
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 And we will skip to executive action, uh, executive session action. On twenty-one, we just took care of twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. I don't believe there's any action or, uh, continue as discussed on twenty-one, twenty-three, and twenty-four, uh, unless there's any objection.
That is correct.
Then we'll go back to, um, Mr. Steele, you're up, number fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If, uh, if it would be okay, I, I have a printed copy of some information I would like to present, to, uh, pass out.
What would you do if I said no? Okay, don't go to line now. You know where you go.
That's what I would do. As, um, as those things are being passed out, I, I do have just a quick, um, comment before we get into this, uh, and a couple of announcements that I will reiterate just at the very end, just for the sake of communication. Uh, first of all, I just want to say to, um, to the trust, the, the fact that we're seeing improvements in food service, the fact that we're seeing, um, cost efficiencies for families to stay connected with their loved ones, the fact that we're taking the quality of healthcare seriously are things you all should be commended for. I want to say thank you very much for your work, um, not only today, but your ongoing work. Mr. Chair, I would also like to say publicly, we would sure be delighted to have some additional appointments to the Citizens Advisory Board. If you guys ever see fit, I know that we've got some additional work to do around the policies and the procedures and some things logistically to work out, but just want to keep that in front of, uh, the commission. Then the other two things I would say, our next round of focus groups, and I'll say this again at the end, is scheduled for August twenty-first, Wednesday, August twenty-first, at one-thirty PM. Mr. Johnson has been phenomenal to accompany us and participate in some of these focus groups, and I just want to keep that date in front of the commission. In case, uh, Mr. Johnson or anyone else would like to accompany us, we would be delighted to have you come in and see what's taking place and hear directly from those who are residing. The other, uh, date that I would like to give to the commission is September fourteenth, Saturday, September fourteenth. This will be the next time that we do a gift pack distribution to everyone who resides in the detention center. That activity is scheduled to start at nine AM. It usually takes about an hour and a half, depending on the number of volunteers we have. I will tell you that working with the administration, volunteers who would like to help us with that, uh, initiative have to be vetted ahead of time, uh, before we're able to go in, and so we're asking people to sign up now. Let us know now if you would like to help on that date, so that we can turn those names in, uh, to Ms. Gardner and her staff to, to go through the background check, which we're going to get those names in at least, uh, two weeks in advance of September the fourteenth, but that'll be the next time we do a, a gift pack, uh, distribution. Okay, so the last time we were able to go in and talk directly to the men and women who reside at the, uh, in the Oklahoma County Detention Center, uh, was on June the twenty-seventh. Uh, myself and Mr. Johnson went in, uh, and conducted focus groups, a discussion with the men and women who reside at the, um, at the detention center. The following is the account, I'll, I'll go through this very quickly, but you also have it in writing. Want to be very clear to say that this was before the, uh, transition to the new food service, before the transition to Belmont food service, but, but here's what, uh, we heard directly from the individuals. Uh, the women indicated, um, the value and connection they are forming with their peers through participating in the support groups and the programming that is now available. They stated that they are allowed time out of their cell for three hours on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays on a regular basis. The women stated the desire for access to more reading material, especially books. They indicated a need for more variety in breakfast food options and would like hot breakfasts more frequently. They stated that a typical breakfast at this time- They stated that a typical breakfast at this time consisted of bologna, dry cake, boiled eggs, and peanut butter. The women expressed an interest in more variety in commissary options, which I think is now a reality, and specifically requested electronic cigarettes and nicotine patches be made available in commissaries, that's what they said. They stated that many individuals no longer have access to free phone calls to connect with their loved ones, and they said there was a time previously where it felt like that everyone was granted at least one five-minute free phone call per week, but those indigent phone calls had stopped according to the individuals that we visited with. The women stated overall access to healthcare services can be limited, yet several said that they are receiving adequate care. They stated that the quality of dental care is lacking. They stated that the bedbug situation is much better, and that bedbugs are not an issue on their pod whatsoever. The women stated overall conditions of the detention center have improved and interaction with the staff is, quote, "way better." They reported interaction with staff as friendly and professional. They stated alternatives to electronic communication with loved ones could be beneficial for individuals, could be beneficial, but could also be challenging for individuals who are technologically challenged. The women said that they appreciated the organization in relation to the routines and schedules that, that are administered on a, on a daily basis, and that things seem to be very well organized inside the facility. The report, and I apologize for the typo, the report from the men who reside at the detention center is as follows. The men stated that they would like more options in commissary and indicated a desire to also obtain electronic cigarettes and nicotine patches, I guess we were, everybody was feeding on that day, I'm not sure. They requested more recreation time and said that they are not allowed out of their cell when one or more people display inappropriate behavior, and there's this frustration from time to time when the entire group gets punished or, or sanctioned for the, for the actions of just a few. The men stated that they would like for their clothes to be taken to the laundry on a more frequent basis, they said that they would also appreciate more snacks in between meals. The men indicated access to free phone calls is also no longer available and requested more electronic tablets, or time on their tablets in their cells. The men said that they would like visitation rights, especially in-person visitation, opportunities with, to, to see their children, just to keep them encouraged and a part of their family's lives. They stated that the bedbug situation is much better. They indicated that the air conditioning could be improved and that room temperatures could be lower, they said it was warm in there, especially on really hot days. The men said interaction with staff is, quote, "a mixed bag," and some staff are really friendly while others are not. The men stated that they could appreciate recreation on the weekend and an occasional movie night, just to have some pro-social activities, and finally, they articulated an overall improvement in the conditions, atmosphere, and quality of life inside the Oklahoma County Detention Center, and stated that things appear to be moving in the right direction. I will just add a footnote, Mr. Johnson was with me, I'll just add a footnote, we were in the pod with the men, and most of the men were out at that time, and, and listen, when they started talking, everybody wanted to talk all at once, felt like there were about twenty, twenty people trying to talk to us all at once. As we were leaving, one of the gentlemen, who was still in his cell, motioned, was like seriously motioning for somebody, either me or Mr. Johnson, come talk to him, and so I asked the correctional officer if it would be okay, and he said, "Sure, go ahead," and I went over and I leaned up to the individual, and he said, "Hey, I don't know what's going on out there, sometimes the guys can get caught up in a mob mentality, I don't know exactly what they're telling you, but I need you to know things are definitely getting better." That's what he said to me. I would just also want to say, while I have the opportunity, to the people, the quality of people who serve on the Trust, thank you, your, your reputation in the community is, is next level. Pastor Scobie, I had the privilege to have dinner with Glenn Simmons, a gentleman who was wrongfully imprisoned for forty-eight years in the state of Oklahoma. He's out in his community, and he shared with me that if it weren't for his personal mentor, Derek Scobie, he does not know where he would be today, but as a result, he's setting the world on fire. Mr. Johnson, there is nobody who sees the dignity, humanity, and value in people better than you do, and, Mr. Chairman, your leadership is just extraordinary. I, I could go on about each one of you, and I just want to say thank you for who you are and for what you do, and I would also just remind you that the next round of focus groups will take place on Wednesday, August the twenty-first, at one-thirty PM, if you would like to join us, and the next care package distribution is scheduled for Saturday, September the fourteenth, at nine AM. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments?
Just a comment, just as always, we just thank you for the investment that you put in, because you've been at this for a long time, and I know it takes a lot of attention, and not just during the focus sessions, but also the recapitulation of all that is shared, so we, we really do thank you, and thank you for your heart, your concern.
Thank you, Pastor. We're, we're tracking, Mr. Buck, Vice Chairman Buck, you had asked us to create some data sets around the information that we've, we've been able to glean over the last couple of years, just to look for those big themes, see where we're making progress, see where we may need to continue to do some work, and we're in the process of compiling a comprehensive data set for you all to have as well, so thank you.
Mr. Speaker?
Yes, sir.
What time on the twenty-first?
One-thirty PM.
One-thirty, thank you.
Yes, sir. One-thirty PM on Wednesday, the twenty-first.
I'll be there, or I'll be square.
Okay, we'll be looking for you.
I stick out like a sore thumb. No more comments? Thank you, Mr. Speaker, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And what you're doing. The only announcement I have is that our next monthly meeting will be on Monday, September ninth, and it will obviously be held in accordance with the Oklahoma Open Meetings Act. Any other comments for the good of the order? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Kimpisi Colerole, please. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much, we are adjourned.